I'll just have to do that.
They don't put these games and stuff on their lawn?
Oh, they don't have it.
Just send it all away.
Okay.
I think that's a dish out, just out doing deep time. I think Time Warner, this is about on its way out, right?
I don't know.
That guy's whatever.
They are at my house.
The prices keep going up, so I don't have that stuff, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I'm tired of the grocery.
What is that other company? Huh?
Comcast?
Comcast water, my thing.
All right.
That's what Steve bought Time Warner off. They said that probably be around thirty orders a month.
Well, here we go again.
Just read up my.
It goes from twenty-nine ninety-five to a hundred and fifty a month.
I got that Wi-Fi genie.
I think that's one of them, like TV or something.
They were offering that to me for free, so.
Or farmer, farmer.
For two years, two years. Yeah. Then you get a bill. Just wait till that time. You'll be going, what?
I tried to, I, I put an antenna on it. No, you can't run it, but I got my ID channel. I said, hey, we could fix it up so you can watch us murder something, you know what I mean?
We can see who rules the roost there, can't we?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thirty-eight years, darn right, Bill.
Why, your thirty-eight years, you're with us.
You got people like me, liars.
Okay.
A flag league is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Scott.
Yes.
Joyce, Stan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Okay, everybody have a chance to look over the minutes. We need a, if there's any discussion or we need a motion to approve the minutes. December, December second, right, yeah, we're gonna do that first.
I'll second it.
Who first did it?
Joyce.
Dorothy.
Joyce.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Okay, next would be the special council meeting. We have December fifteenth. We need those minutes approved.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Steve.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yeah.
Stan.
Yes.
Bill.
I abstain.
Okay, discussion approval of the financial report.
Okay, looks like revenues, I need to hear the statement they have here. I think around a hundred and two percent of what forecast revenue was, and that's a good. And then, uh, one-two point seven-four percent. And then that, like in style, the big statement was, uh, this month forty-two thousand five hundred sixteen ninety, ninety cents. That's a hundred percent.
Would have any other discussion on it? If not, we'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Bill.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Okay, which one are you, you go talk or which one, you wanna talk down, downstairs and I can run something up? Uh, yeah. But, you know, we purchased Duck Cage Meters property on the corner there.
Okay.
And, uh, we understand that there's still a water sewer charge on that property. Since there is no house, there never will be any house there, we would like to have that removed.
Question's for that, so I mean, yes, I mean, once you do that, don't, it's, it'll be, it'll be property put on here unless.
Yeah, well, for, you do a house, they'll pay the, the, big part to install it.
Big selling.
You have to be. Cause it is the type, uh, everything is taken out, because it's a really, it's been removed back that far. Okay, so, but you have to understand that if you ever do build a house there or something like that, then you'll have to pay the whole deal of getting it right up.
Yeah, back up again.
Guys were saying too, that, um, if in a flood plain, more or less, and they said that they couldn't ever build another house there.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know that, that's, that is true, cause I know they talked, when they come back, well, back when we had that flood back, how many years ago that was now. That was part of, I mean, I know, my property is part of that too, cause they, they caught the edge of my property on that, it's a riverbed plane.
I fought that, got rid of it.
Did you know?
House.
Did you have the same issue too?
Yeah, just on the section of the.
The properties is.
So, what's the procedure for doing that, I guess, so we, at least we know that.
Oh.
I just went through, uh, had an attorney find through it.
Okay. So, I don't know, so that's something to think about. I mean, if you do build a property, I mean, maybe there's a way around it, but if it's flood plain, then that's probably makes it challenging for anybody to loan or, you know, whatever, for the property then, right?
Yeah.
I mean. I mean, we're doing for everybody else, I guess we gotta be consistent with it, so. After, after, but the issue comes down to if you do something, improve property, put something back on it, then there's gonna be a, a pretty costly going back to it, so. Let me understand that.
I remember the discussion for, can't think of his name.
Robert?
Yeah. That, what, what other ones have we done this for?
The other book he was, uh.
Okay, full, uh, don't.
Yeah, not full, what was the kid's name?
Clark.
Aaron.
Clark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the one that removed the mobile.
That house.
So, I can make a motion to do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, like, vacate that.
I'll second it.
Vacate and clear the charges?
Pardon?
And clear the charges on the.
Does he have, does it have open charges there? I don't, I don't know.
Can't.
Sharon, Sharon told us she paid it for two months.
But.
Yeah, so is it current?
Well, yeah, well, I think it's gotta be brought up current.
Make it, well, where the current is, I don't know when, when the last.
Well, he's looking it up right now, I'll tell you.
Cadestrating now or whatever, I mean. I suppose that would be their responsibility, because if I didn't want to buy the property, right?
Right.
So, small property, huh? So, I'm trying to look there, see what we have.
What are they?
It's probably around.
You guys keep this up, we'll have to change the name of the town, or you're gonna have to own town, right?
We bought it because it was my original.
Oh, really?
I had to answer a computer from Ed's great part, and I had the citation and everything.
How much ground did he have? Was it just that area or? Oh, did? He didn't like, like, the white pocket work, because they.
He did not have blues.
Blues, did blues?
They were like that, full of.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
There's no ways to go yet, then.
Like I said, we bought it simply because I, I wanted it to come full circle back around.
Yeah.
Well, you can mow mine down, man, that's what.
If you're.
You got a lake going.
No problem, huh?
Yeah. Amazing.
Who's it on the left? So, is the motion still on the table?
Yeah, well, or is it checking, would I see what we got here?
What's the address there?
No.
One hundred.
Yeah.
Maybe one oh one?
Fifty-one, one, you know.
Yeah.
Is it Monroe or you?
Monroe, Monroe.
You guys already called and had it put in your name?
Me.
Yeah, the balance is zero right now.
We did not, Sharon said, Sharon told us the other day that she had paid it up for the next two months.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
There's no credit or anything, the balance is just zero, so.
Okay, so then Scott, you made a motion to vacate.
I made a motion, vacate, vacate.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have Scott.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yeah.
Stan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Okay.
Done.
Done.
Just keep it mowed.
Only got picking up sticks.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Round down the street, pick up any yard you want, start mowing.
Okay, public comment, you know. Okay, there's one report from committees, our name's budget audit, done.
We'll discuss where it was at, so.
Please, uh, Brittany, you wanna go ahead?
Yes, this past month of December, we had two citations, fifteen verbal warnings, letter written warnings. We had six adult complaints, and we assisted one other agency. The only other thing that we had going on in the month of December was we had a department, uh, meeting, and we discussed the future department, and what we'd like to do, and what we'd like to start, uh, doing for the community. That was it.
Okay, they're all getting along real good now, there's no, no conflict in the police department? I like that. Looks like we got, we saw some of the dollar issues, though, seems like the kids are doing pretty good right now.
Yeah, well, there's not a lot of, it's, like, people's dogs getting out.
Oh.
Cause an adult made the complaint, it goes down as a, the dog complaint.
Oh, is that what it is?
There are things like that, dogs at large, um, that it's, they're not major complaints, they're just some minor ones, but we have to document everything, yeah.
Okay, so we're not having fights or anything.
Well, not that we know of, there's lights over there right now.
Read the paper more.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Brittany?
Yeah, sometimes they've been trawling around the school and keeping it quiet around there, they were sitting out there the other night, I appreciate that.
I mean, the kid, the school's pretty active now, I mean, it's a good thing to watch.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've been using them, having cars a long time, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, when we went to Christmas play, we might have walked from home, but we had parked down by, drive your feelings, and we find place.
I had good parking.
I should park in your driveway, yeah.
You should have, you should have.
We could have charged me five bucks, and I'd have been happy, huh?
Ah, I'd charge three years. They'd charge you five in their place.
We got shuttle service.
Yeah, oh, right, that makes a difference.
But, yeah, that was bad, that's, I was sitting there on that bleacher saying, ah, that's true, there's a lot of people on this.
It was good to see that, really.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Yeah, they even had to bring chairs down on the junior board.
That was only the third grade.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Kindergarten.
K through three.
Really?
That's good, though.
And, uh.
They were setting the stage.
The other, others was, they did have a sixth grade choir. Okay, fire, Steve?
Had eleven calls for the month. Year in total is one hundred and twenty-six calls. The department would like to welcome Brittany Twig as a new member for the department. So, when do you sleep?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't.
Be after the town.
Yeah. There's a lot of.
We're gonna ask the phone.
Well, we spent some quality time up at the post office the other day during that.
Oh, yes.
Well, they had, they had that issue with the post office, Brittany was up there, and I was, had the place blocked down.
We will be holding fire classes starting this Saturday until May. And we are getting a new quote for the replacement of the jaws of life. And final, the department will be changing some of its SOPs to match what ISO is requiring for department training hours and firefighter levels. And that's it.
Was, was the fire truck paid off this year?
Yes.
Is it this year is paid off?
Yeah.
No, it was paid off.
Oh, it's paid off then, now.
Well, it's about time for him to start looking for a new one, isn't it? Here we go.
Well, and I could hope some jaws of life, you know, whatever, it's another truck or something, I don't know. I was thinking, it was just, right now.
What do you start with?
For, we did last Saturday, we had orientation, our first official classroom is this Saturday.
Oh.
I believe it's a, it's a six week course, so we have class seven Saturday.
That was pretty full on Saturday, I mean, there's a lot of people here.
Clean up, George?
Nothing.
Now, wait a minute. There's a new landowner with a pile of brush across from me.
I'll check on that in the morning, okay? I have my papers right here. Hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Okay. Or maybe, maybe they mauled.
Get that money away, you're like.
Yeah, we're gonna. Okay, water sewer street, Jen?
Nothing really going on in sewer plant, thankfully, nothing with water right now, and the street, well, everything worked good, it's the first time.
So, you did fine job this morning, I was impressed.
Oh, yeah, I was too.
What time did I get bed?
What time did I get here or a bed?
I guess here.
I got here a little before four.
I'm gonna say.
I was gonna say, he was at.
It was good in a way.
It takes a lot, about two hours.
Yeah, because the streets were real nice and clean, I hit Route twelve, I had to go in a ditch. They didn't touch anything.
It takes about three hours to follow it, and then another hour, and then salt.
Yeah, it is.
But it's a fine job.
We're using salt or we're using stone?
I mix it to thin it out.
Okay.
You know, kinda on the street where the covert is in, notice, it isn't blacked out, because all the places are closed, so it'll be blacked out in the spring.
I just can't use cord patch.
I know.
It'd be a real cold patch.
Nah, it's cold, that stone's cold enough.
Yeah, it looks, looks pretty good, though, I mean, it looks, but, yeah, it's, it's that CD she was going now, don't worry about it, you know.
Okay, perk, put Brittany on again.
Uh, we haven't had our meeting yet this month, we wanted to see what was going on with our, with financing and stuff like that, uh, before we determine what we're gonna do. Um, still looking at having some special events, like maybe the car show, um, depending on financing, uh, we'll, uh, we'll decide later on about the political line, what we wanna do then.
I need to find a way somehow. To attract, we were talking.
Oh, yes, um, the other thing I have, there's some comments being made on social media websites that are suggesting, um, they're questioning how we govern things, and how we do things out at the park, and it kind of irritated me in a way, because we had, there were comments from the public saying that it's the management's reason why the park has failed, um, when I really don't have a say in anything that takes place financially, that's council. Um, and I just wish that if there is a concern, come straight to me, call me, talk to me, um, and I'll be happy to, to talk about it, and figure out what we wanna do, and if we wanna do fundraising events, we'll, we'll sit down and figure something out of how we can fundraise to get money for the park, cause the way it looks is, we're not gonna be able to help with swimming, but the rest of the park can be built.
Right.
Um, hopefully at the meeting, um, at our next park committee meeting, we'll decide on what we wanna do. I'm not looking to get paid for the park, since we don't have the financing for it, I'm looking to volunteer, be the park director again, if you guys approve that, um, I just wanna see it succeed, and I think it's just past, um, decisions that were made, financial decisions that probably weren't the best decisions, cause we did, it looks like we didn't have a three, five, ten year forecast for the park, and I think that's kind of come to bite us in the life, I don't know.
Well, but that's, that's just part of the issue, I mean, the issue comes down to is, I mean, you have to be real, live in reality, what it costs to operate the park, or you get the money from, and if you don't have the resources coming in, there comes a point in time, so maybe you're only, you're only, if you look, you lost a lot of your economic base that used to support the park, and, you know, that stuff, all that stuff's one way, and, and, and people didn't realize how much benefit they're getting in the community, cause it didn't cost them anything.
Yeah.
And now the problem is, if they want that benefit, then there's gonna be a cost to it, so.
I just didn't like the negative.
No, I mean, there's a.
Attitude that was being brought up on there, and I understand that people have concerns, and people don't come to the council meetings, and they don't see what's being said here and stuff like that, so.
Well, it's, it's easy to be a troll, a troll, a troll on social media, when you only have to defend your position. It's a different thing when you have to, when you have to be a combo of something, so, I mean, it is what it is, I think, I think we're all making good, generous decisions, here, looking at the facts, and what to deal with right now, right? Until we figure out some other revenue resources or whatever, we have to be realistic, I mean, we don't have that kind of money to do fireworks or something like that, or open the park up, until we figure out another way to do it, and, and having this transition through the school, or we was getting the revenue from the.
From the levees.
From the levees and stuff like that.
And I would like to look at, in future, like, what we can, um, putting something on the levy, putting a levy out again.
Well, there will be, I'm working with Old Ford, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's just a matter, you know, you gotta go through this transition, the bottom line is, I mean, the school, we just went through this whole transition, the school's gotta get stabilized, and, and get, and that program's figured out, then, cause the issue, the issue's gonna be too, is that people really don't know what's gonna cost them for the school, until they went to this, the next.
Well, we have, we.
Taxes yet, you know.
Yeah, we have figured out that what the Old Ford School District will get a lot more money for a one mil levy.
Yeah.
Don't put two half mils on, but just put one, one mil for five years.
Right.
That'll generate ninety-four thousand dollars.
Right.
And it'll cost the homeowner of a hundred thousand dollar home about thirty-five dollars.
Yeah.
But we gotta convince Old Ford.
That would be, we could do so much with that amount of money.
But, I mean, that, that, uh, we gotta convince Old Ford.
Yeah, that's gonna be the challenge.
It'll be a challenge to say, hey, we took over your school, we're not taking.
See, I went to the forum, there's not really a place to do youth sports around here, they have to go to other towns and stuff, or use other schools' equipment, and it's like soccer fields and stuff, but I, we have the facility out here to house that, why not use it? Um, I mean, if we could get the funding for it, it would be easy to do, and it'd be easy to maintain too.
Has there been any discussion with the township, to see if there might be a township bringing the township in in some form or fashion?
Yeah, we've, I've talked to Tim Lynch and that, and, uh, just in a top of the state, that, I mean, that's another thing to fall back on, too, that it could be Liberty, but so. But that wouldn't generate as much as what.
Right.
We would with Old Ford.
But that wouldn't prevent us from bringing them in later.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, you take what you get.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the thing.
I mean, we're trying to look at all avenues, so, I mean, that's what we, I mean, it's very unfortunate that this happened, we didn't figure we're gonna lose our school, and, you know.
Right.
Everything keeps tumbling down in that way, and there's nothing we can do about it. But we have to make a decision tonight, too, to what, if we're gonna rent the shelter houses out, we have to tell them that there's gonna be no swimming, and we have to also, we're getting calls now for camping for the Fourth of July. Well, we gotta decide if we're gonna have the Fourth of July out there, or what, what we can do. So, this is some decisions that's gotta be made now, so that we can tell the people when they call.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna do it, no, we aren't gonna do it.
So, you want to discuss that on a new business then?
Yeah, well, we can discuss it right now, while we're on a park, I don't care, that, I mean, we might as well do that now, is to, to do what we can do, cause I figured we'd charge seventy-five dollars for the shelter houses, like we always do and reserve them. And with Brittany being out there, where she can see that they're cleaned and everything, and so forth, if they're rented out, but the people have to be told that there would be no swimming this year.
Well, I think we got it, that's, first of all, we present that to people, what else?
And, and, and we also have to decide, if the council wants to throw money in for fireworks on the Fourth of July, then we could have camping and stuff, if not, then we, we're just, I don't see any sense of having camping out there, if we're not gonna have anything going on.
We won't be able to have swimming on the Fourth of July, cause I don't think, we won't be able to get lifeguards.
Oh, no, no, I know, I'm saying, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, if we have fireworks and stuff, it'd be worth camping and stuff out there for, but if we have nothing, I, then.
And if we do have fireworks, I'm looking to have, like, bands come in, or have some kind of event going on that we can draw people in to keep them there for the whole weekend, um, but, I don't know, we, we have to have a decision if we're gonna have a Fourth of July out here, or not, before we go.
What's?
We, we pay twelve, we pay twelve thousand dollars for fireworks.
That's what I'm saying, I was running off twelve dollars.
And then we always are gonna get a thousand from the subdivision, a thousand from the legion.
What is the village?
We're trying about fourteen thousand, huh?
I'm asking, uh, what is the village's liability? Let's say we rent these shelters, we have camping, and somebody decides they're gonna go swimming anyhow, and there's an accident.
We have to have it secured, I mean, what they talk about is high defense and stuff like that.
So, there's initial cost right there.
What if, I mean, there's a lot of these organizations, like the, the YMCA and different organizations in colleges, like over at Heidelberg, that, uh, they have swim teams with lifeguards, that we can get them the vol, yeah, they're licensed, to get them the voluntary or time for, like, the Fourth of July? I mean, I, somebody I was talking to the other day brought that, or he says, lots of times they do that, different organizations that'll just donate their time for that one day, to make sure we have swimming and stuff like that.
Well, maybe the other thing we could do is look at it a different way, I mean, we, we always went to a reduced rate of long term for, for lifeguards, just like that, what happened for that one day, we actually pay a higher rate, where we could get somebody, say even twenty dollars an hour or something like that, so for that, just for one day.
That's another option.
You know, I'm just saying, I mean, cause then.
I don't think we ought to give up on it, on, at least for that one day, cause that's, that was known, has become known for, for one of the best fireworks around this part, part of Ohio.
Okay.
And I don't think we should give up.
We can look into it, the, the college thing, like, because people, students will be on, there's summer vacation and stuff, they'll be on break, so, um, but if you have local people, uh, who attend those universities and stuff, you might be able to pick some up.
Somebody from there was telling me that, that, that's been done in the past with them.
From what?
Uh, I thought it was Heidelberg, but.
Yeah, Tiffin, they just started a school this year.
I mean, if you make.
Yeah, it was Tiffin University, I'm sorry, it was Tiffin University, cause it was my boy telling me, they have, they have, yeah, I would get ahold of them and see if, if they have something that they can do.
I'm just thinking that if you make, you work your, work your time for that one day, and give them a fair compensation, I mean, we have to figure out what that, that is, but I'm just saying, you could probably get somebody to do it for one day. But the issue, the other issue comes into what, would we have to do with health department, so like, if I open for one day or something, is there other hoops we'd have to jump through?
Or, yeah.
Probably they do some testing.
Yeah, you have to get the beach inspected, and then the water's gotta be tested.
Is that something we can do for, like, like, for a week or something, you know, get prepped and everything the week before or something?
Well, yeah, you have, still have to maintain the beach the whole summer, you can't let it go, otherwise.
Yeah, no, but I mean.
Disaster the following summer.
Oh, I understand, but I'm, well, I guess what I'm saying is that you'd legally be prepared to have it open for that one day, or that weekend, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, is that an option, or?
Well, it may be, it may be, now's the time to think about it, uh, so.
Or do the kind of decisions that we have to make.
Is there anybody we could get aboard the health department?
Yeah, we could call them.
I could gotta get some information.
I work during the day, so I don't have time at work.
I can get, I can get ahold of Matt, or I can get ahold of the health department.
Uh, I don't see why it'd be a problem to get a check.
Yeah.
For one weekend, but, back on the security thing. For, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm still waiting.
Yeah. Bec, the only reason I kinda, yeah, about that is cause. I mean.
It's the way it is, I mean, you know, I'd sort of point out.
Or, just.
Like a shark.
No, I understand.
And, and, and this village knows, cause this village has been through it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and I understand that completely.
Yeah.
But our insurance company has never had an issue with what we have out there, yeah.
And I imagine you would increase police patrol that whole weekend, out here, we have some.
Well, I'm talking in general.
Yeah, throughout the whole summer.
Yeah.
Because, once you shut it down, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be free game.
And we, that was part of our, our, uh, our meeting, what we discussed.
Put up more no trespassing signs, you know, and the.
Get a meatball.
I mean, there's, there's.
Put up, put up more signs like that, if you don't use it, I mean, or, or if you use it like, oh, Olympic sized swimming pool they had when I was a kid, they turned that into a fishing pond, that was really fun. They stopped it.
Well.
But, you know, whatever you do with it, if you wanna keep people out, you put no trespassing, make it very clear all over the place.
I guess my issue is.
Make sure no toddlers can get in.
Well, we've got a, a fence around the majority of it, it's only four foot high. I know when I. Thousands. I built that pool out Route twelve, I had nationwide over here in Fremont, once they found out that the concrete was set, even before it was watered, they came out and said, you got a week to get a six foot fence around that thing, or your insurance is canceled, because you're not there all the time. So, that can be funny. The other issue is, is the north end of the quarry doesn't have a fence at all.
Right, right. You can ask the insurance company.
Oh, and I.
Yeah, we love without.
Well, ask what, what, what we need to do to protect ourselves, at least, you know, the best we can. Well, ask what, what, what we need to do to protect ourselves at least, you know, the best we can.
Once you decide what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, does that seem viable for that, that holiday weekend and try to do what we did with?
Well, I would hope that, we, uh, cause I mean, I'd help, uh, I wouldn't wanna lose the fireworks thing, but I mean, we also gotta look at what we talked about. We wanna get some streets done and stuff like that, we don't want to. We don't wanna spend money unnecessarily that's not gonna produce anything back.
Right.
Cause you, you gotta remember, last year, we spent fourteen, well, we spent, the town spent twelve thousand, we got two thousand donated.
Yeah.
And we got, we collected eight thousand dollars for receipts for the day.
Right.
So, you're getting.
You're losing.
Not a little less than half.
Right, right.
Gary, have you ever considered sending letters out to people? I was just. My parents live around Sycamore, and they have really great fireworks, the fire department sends letters to everybody, and people donate tons of money for that.
No, try something like that.
Oh, we can try it, yeah.
Try something.
We're out for anything.
I mean, it means.
I have a, another thing, um, are we having a Little League program since it's now Old Ford? There's, all the elementary kids are most likely gonna be handed out flyers for Old Ford's Little League, which is held at Fort Seneca. Could we look into the sponsors that sponsor our Little League program for our fireworks? If we don't have our Little League program out here?
Yeah, cause I would imagine most all those kids are gonna go with Old Ford, you know, of just having them choose.
And we can still use our facility, we can talk to the communities and stuff and use our facility, cause they'll need the extra fuels.
Sure.
But.
Well, how much do you think it's gonna realistically cost us just to basically maintain the property, keep the grass in the water, I mean, even if you voluntary labor, it must be about two bucks.
Yeah, you're gonna have to figure the mowing on it and stuff like that would be.
I mean, how much does that cost realistically?
Yeah, you're, you're taking care of it, it's gonna probably eat up that fourteen five, not more.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Just to have it mowed by somebody and everything.
And issue, I guess the issue comes down to, do we increase mowing some of it and set up, like, sanctuaries or something?
Cause we got, we'll, we'll have to, if we have to kick shelter houses open and stuff like that, D and D.
All that depends on camping.
Yeah, huh?
That depends on camping, because really, where you have your campsite will be about the only place you can leave go, cause it's far enough away from them.
Right, so I'm just saying, look at, I mean, it's, I'm trying to save some money, but, plus tying, I mean, cause you know, you have so many volunteers and stuff, and you gotta mow all that yard and everything else, I mean.
How much money did we spend on gas for mowers last year?
We're at the park, we filled that tank, what, twice.
Twice, yeah.
So, how much was gas, times three hundred ga- well, times six hundred gallons, can you fill it twice?
You know, we usually paid, it was in the three dollar or even, or something, a hundred per gallon, so.
Eighteen hundred, two thousand bucks or just some gas, right?
Yeah.
Along the time and.
Yeah.
Oil changes, blade changes.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of maintenance ones, mowers, so.
It's a hundred and twenty dollars for a set of blades.
Yeah.
The belts last, yeah, about half the season, those are a hundred and ten bucks a piece.
Yeah, that adds up.
And you gotta have somebody on the mower that's gonna give a darn about it and not tear that equipment up, so, I mean, that's, that's a big deal.
And, 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 and it's not totally fair, fair to expect volunteers to do it all, I mean, you know, there's gotta be some kind of compensation or something.
Gary and I can even talk about that a little bit.
Yeah.
So.
We got a couple ideas for that, but we can't even figure out what we're gonna do.
What is the value of the real estate out there? Any idea?
I don't know. I know it's like, what, twenty-three acres? Total around, right around twenty-three acres.
The problem, the problem is like, you couldn't, and one were for farming, because it's basically that, is the stone's right up to you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
You know, I mean, cause I know just, their, their edge of Dad's property towards that way, I mean, you start hitting them out.
They hold a lot of dirt in there.
I know, cause I remember as a kid, they hauled a lot of dirt in there, they took all those trees out. So, I mean.
I mean, we realistically gotta just look at the basic picture.
Yeah.
And, and see what council wants to do, because, um, it is a nice park, but I need to see it go, we got some other options, but, uh.
I think we just wanna, concert, for me, I think we just wanna conservation mode for right now, and try to keep our costs down, and try to figure out where the school goes at for, cause it's gonna be the east of here, if, for that stabilizes, and then we can figure out if we can go.
Well, even if we got that levy passed this year, it's another year, so it's two years. We got the money, so.
So, we're probably at least two years before you might even see some extra revenue or something realistically, right?
Cause I mean, that, that levy would fix us up good, and it would be pretty good shape.
So, I think, as Brittany said, we're gonna long-term and try to keep the thing going, but we gotta go in a conservation mode right now to try to save it, and do what we gotta do just to survive, so we don't go away and. Just to maintain it, so it's still usable for the, the community as far as they can still have to exoture or whatever, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they'll be open, and they can go out and picnic and stuff like that, and they can reserve the shelter houses, or if they wanna take a chance, and first come, first served it, and that's.
So, I guess.
Other thing, but.
I guess what we can try to do in this thing is, is like, Angela said or something, we just try to solicitate, and try to get money and stuff for the.
Cause we can't wait long, so.
Well, fireworks and stuff like that.
Even assume we put twelve grand in for the fireworks, and chances are, we might get about half of that back. I mean, i- if your expenses only gonna be six, seven grand for it. If you lose that, you're never gonna get those people to come back again when you finally do get to.
That's the issue, we gotta understand that.
That's what I'm worried about.
Right, I don't think you wanna lose completely, ever.
And I like Daniel's idea of sending out letters to, because we got a much broader base now.
Yeah.
I mean, their kids, the kids from Old Ford come over here and go to school here now, so.
Yeah, on, so maybe, maybe.
They're attached in this community.
Maybe they can get them from school or something like that, so we don't wanna put a send them to them either, how, how would we do that? I have that, you know, is that something we can try? I mean, we could at least try and see if we, see if we get any response back.
And then, I mean, if we make that decision that we're gonna have the fireworks on the Fourth, then if you feel comfortable that we could do. Set ourselves up with the twelve thousand out of the general fund, and then if we could get all these donations in, then it's that much less that we'd have to pay out of the general fund. But that's what your decision's gonna be. It's, it's totally up to you guys, but I mean, it, it's a good idea, like you say, it's, it'll never come back if we don't.
Yeah, once it goes away, it's done.
Yeah. I mean, we have, we have, we have to make it as active as we can right now. We know we can't afford to pay the lifeguards and that, we can't take that out of the fund and do that, for that, just be.
That's just, that's.
I mean, that's throwing money away that we can't do, cause we need streets and stuff.
So, what do you think? What, what, what's everybody assessing, what do you think the community, as a whole, would think, I mean, if we do this, would you think the community would be positive about it, or, or negative, if we try to move forward from you guys' perspective?
Well, I'm basing on, on what Brittany's got here, I mean, they're throwing a lot of negative bar- uh, barbs, uh, on Facebook.
Well, it's getting fueled by other things.
So, to be honest.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of people, that people like to be negative.
There's a lot of complaints of closing the swimming, but there isn't really that many Betsville community members who use our facility.
No, we, you know.
A, a lot of, I would say on a handful, there's probably five elderly couple in the community that go out and use the walking path, that they'll walk out there daily. Other than that, there's maybe five families that have children, ten families, that use the park, I would say, more than once a week.
The problem is, is you can't generate enough revenue during a day anymore.
Well, we understand that.
To fund.
Yeah, there's no way, and we know that's not gonna work, it's not like it was going.
And we can't predict the weather, so.
Right.
My first summer, when we had all that rain and those storms and stuff, that really hurt.
Yeah.
And I tried to.
Literally, we almost got sucked out of life, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess what, what, what looks to me like what we could probably do right now, maybe we, we try to figure out how we can do the fireworks, and try to get some money, and maybe, I don't know, if we can scale back a little bit on fireworks, or something, to get the cost down, maybe ten thousand versus twelve thousand or something, you know, I mean. Just, just try so we can ma- still make it work, and still not be, you know, maybe enough to pretty well offset and won't hurt the general fund too much, but we just have to shut the swimming down. Or, we look at the option just for that one, one week, or whatever, and then we just gotta pay a little extra money for lifeguards to get them in there.
What is the, the, uh, camping permit cost us fifty bucks?
Fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Was the camping worthwhile last year?
Oh, yeah.
That last year, yeah, we just did it.
Yeah, it was pretty good last year.
We also had swimming, so that kind of helped keeping it there.
Right, you don't really know how that's gonna go, but.
I mean, the year before that.
It's fifty bucks, if you get four people, your permit's paid.
Yeah.
Right. And some people just like to go someplace where they can sit down and just be, whatever, I mean, they don't necessarily go swimming.
A lot of people said it was local, so that's why they liked coming, it was close to homes, so if they needed to run home to get something, they liked it.
Yeah, there was a lot of people from Tiffin.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Let's face it, a lot, most communities around here don't have that kind of an asset at their disposal, we gotta do something to.
Well, the only thing we can do is try to, just try to save it the best we can, and invite, we're gonna try to do it for a couple of years, just to try to buy us time till we get this other, right?
No, I have a question, what happens after this summer, the two thousand fifteen summer? Are, will we still have that, uh, fourteen thousand five hundred coming in?
Yeah.
No.
No, not, not that much.
No.
It'll be even less.
We got, yeah, we got it up through.
Let's cross that bridge when we get to.
Yeah, but yes.
Cut it out the way we're right out.
To your answer, yes, we will have quite a bit of it.
I don't wanna essentially run into things and then get so far in the hole that we can't make ourselves back out, if the levy should pass for the whole school district, or whatever we plan to do.
Well, right now, you know, we're, we're trying to focus on just maintaining the park, and how to keep a normal Fourth of July, as normal as we can for the Fourth of July and get through the season. Then we'll have to look at, we'll have to be, we'll be right back there doing the same thing next year.
Just Saturday, Saturday?
Can we get these letters out now and see what kind of feedback we're gonna get?
On.
I think we might be surprised.
For the donations for the fireworks?
And then we would know more comes next month, you know, where we stand.
Now, who are we talking about sending those to, like, to everybody?
You're talking to all families?
I think everybody in the school district.
I, that's what I would say.
That's what I think we do. I mean, I mean, it probably costs a lot of money.
Maybe we could get a letter from Angela's contact to see how, how they worry about it.
Yeah, I could probably get one.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, that, I mean.
I mean, if we do a pre-sorted bulk mailing, it's not as expensive as.
Cause my parents are on McCutcheon though, and they get it from Sycamore, so, and that's.
I, I, I'm thinking that's probably a good thing to do, and, and, but I don't think we can advantage the whole school district, cause I mean, cause a lot of the kids from Old Ford are in here. And, you know, and try to at least get them sucked into it, but right now, there's, you know, being part of, part of the.
All we gotta do is do them up, they gotta be a, to do a pre-sorted, uh, standard mailing, that's just gotta be one piece of paper, it can be front and back, yeah, it's gotta be flat.
If they can't be folded, they have to be flat, that's how they go in, they start their box.
Hold on. If I stand, if.
Yeah, they just send it out for Christmas.
Right, we just send ours out.
But, we, we've done.
They'll put it in everybody's P O boxes, so it'd just be a matter of going, well, at least.
Yeah, but how, how you get those, how, you know, how, how.
You'd have to get a mailing list.
Yeah, they'll say, well, get a school and then try to do it, but I think, just try and see what happens, just, at least that would give you a, a gauge of what we can try to do.
And see how into the community.
Yeah, you wanna do businesses too, cause that's who's gonna give you a chance, yeah.
Right. Because.
Oh, yeah.
Because the problem with just, I mean, if you, if you just, you gotta, you gotta kinda take, take the, the social media as, as one entity, and not, not, not that, hold the whole picture, cause I mean, there's a lot of people that are, you know, they're, they're dealing with a lot of that stuff.
Right.
So, the, the issue comes down to, you gotta kinda get, gauge the whole, we already see what they think.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, it's easy, easy to say something negative and not have to be accountable for it, so.
Would give us a baseline.
Then, then we could maybe make it, but, I think we oughta try to at least try to do the Fourth of July, if we can, I don't know if we can do it.
Yeah.
Because like you said, once we lose it, we're basically, we're done, we'll never, we'll never get back, so. And, you know, it, it.
It's too nice a park to.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So, I guess the issue is, if we get the fourteen thousand, or what we're gonna work with, are we gonna have, say, realistically, to get by with six thousand dollars for operational costs, and try to use that money to help with the fireworks, or, you know, if we can figure out what we gotta do there? So, by saying that, is there things we can do at the park, just to make it useful?
Well, yeah, I mean, I can get the crossways guys, they can go, they can weed whack, they can do stuff.
You know.
Uh, and then I don't know, some of them probably be okay to trust on more, others, uh.
Yeah.
We gotta watch who we put on them because of, of the deal of tearing them up, or we're gonna be right back in bad old.
Right, right. So, I mean, I.
And I mean, I'll get as much volunteer work as I can, work as I can, but, I mean, we gotta be realistic about it.
Did you do businesses in all three towns around here? Cause remember Brandon said he couldn't believe all the people from Fostoria that came this year?
Yeah, yeah, we could send.
Sure.
There's a lot, a lot of big towns, a lot of families that come out for the Fourth of July, and just from the summer, from the summer that come in, you're like the city.
Yeah, that's where he gets, oh, yeah, I suppose it's part of his.
Yeah. Right off the bat.
I guess the other thing too is, should we also consider what cash we're, we're charging for carload or something, or how we do that, make it fair or?
Well, I think five dollars a carload is pretty damn fair.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just saying.
I mean, I wouldn't wanna make it any cheaper.
No, I don't, I'm.
See, I don't wanna make it more that it would drive them away and say, well, I ain't doing it to pay for going to this one, but I'd always like coming to this one, cause this is really good.
Most of them don't complain about that.
Well, nobody should complain about it even without the swimming, cause it never covered the swimming costs.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, everybody had to pay it that day anyhow, for one.
Joyce and I knew all right that our game's only.
So, I guess the consensus, what I'm understanding right now, where I wanna move forward and try to at least do the fireworks and stuff, and so we oughta at least pretend to paper. And then figure out how we're gonna get there, but we're gonna have to make some tough decisions, I mean.
Possibly swimming that week too, or?
Well, I would recommend that we can figure out a way to do it.
If we can figure out some.
We have to talk about the insurance company and then the health department to make sure that it's possible, and then contact the universities, and I'll contact my lifeguards that I've had.
I would try.
If, if they allow it.
I guess the other thing, maybe Brittany may need to help us, what, what do you think would be a fair compensation for a lifeguard to, to have a chance to get somebody there for that weekend? I mean, that would probably cost them, cause what, what's, what's a lifeguard made eight bucks an hour, I don't think they make one.
I'll, I'll be in one.
Okay.
You what you're looking.
Sounds a ton of sad.
The facility that you go to, if you're at City Park, you're making a ten, if you're at, like, White Stone or us, it depends on what.
Since the Fourth is on a Saturday.
Worth their while, you gotta make it look enticing.
We never opened up camping until after five o'clock on Friday, so you technically.
Why would you try to save me anyway?
It's a Saturday Sunday, yeah.
So, we could do something like that, I mean, we can pull it off, and then we can make it soli- stop.
So, you only need, what, twelve, eight, twelve hours where the lifeguards? Give them six, both days or whatever.
Would you make it a full weekend if it's on Saturday, how about keeping it open on Sunday too?
Probably, yeah, oh.
Friday, Saturday, or just, the Saturday.
No, just Saturday, Sunday.
Well, I mean, the camping come in Friday, like they always do, but, there's really no point in having the swimming open for a couple hours at night.
Okay.
I would say do swimming Sa- Saturday and Sunday.
So, if we can maybe look, well, put a team together, and what, you don't gotta pay a little extra money up. So if we can maybe look about putting a team together and what, you don't gotta pay the extra money up for.
Right.
Associates, maybe that would make it, at least make it work.
Yeah, might, they might go for ten dollars, you know.
Yeah, and then, then we, then we still, we're not breaking the bank too bad, you know what I'm saying?
Do you have copies of all the lifeguard certifications? Cause I know some of them are due for research, so.
Yeah, we'll say that a little bit, what's that paid for?
You have to make a motion.
How many hours you talking that day, swimming?
Well, yeah, we gotta, I wanna put it on, you know, in a minute.
Are we still?
So I'm glad we need to make a motion.
Yeah, but.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to move forward with the Fourth of July for the park, I'll second it.
You're a cow with your bobby's tail, bet you wish you had one of them, no, yeah.
Don't make me feel guilty.
Nah.
We could count eight, that's.
There's our slogan. Fight for four.
Do you have billings, Scott?
No.
That's why I didn't look. So can I borrow yours?
Hey, we ready?
You got a bathroom now?
Okay.
I made a motion, so did you get that down?
I second it.
To move forward with the Fourth of July, this year.
Rob, you second it?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys for doing this, I think, uh.
I think it's the right thing to do.
I think it's the right thing to do, but, like you say, we gotta make sure we got our money where it needs to be.
Right, I mean, we gotta.
Because we talked about it and we're gonna, we, we wanna do some streets this year.
Right.
So, we wanna make sure that that gets done. Okay, zoning, Scott, you got anything?
Well, it looks like he got his building all put together, so I'm, I'm in the garage, looks good down there, so, so I guess it's okay.
Take it, take it.
It's ready to move, so when he leaves, leaves the house, he's ready to move with it, so, should be good.
Okay. Okay.
He's kinda hard on him.
Sorry, he just come out, I'm like my mother sometimes, I'm sorry.
That's not a bad thing.
You know.
Your life's bad.
Whole business, I, we did talk about cover it, it isn't, so all we had to do is have the blacktop from the spring. Okay, then the second reading, the resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty, as to credit card policy. The purpose is to establish a convenient, efficient, and cost-effective method of purchasing goods and services one vendor will not accept purchase orders. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I read it before, so this will be the second reading. Of the credit card policy. Hmm, the next one. Is.
Does that include the council?
Uh, well, no, we'll go to the next one, we passed this, that was when we, uh, we needed to make an ordinance out of it, though, of twenty fourteen dash twenty-three. An ordinance to re-appropriated, unappropriated funds in the amount of five thousand dollars for the water fund, declaring an emergency.
Right.
Probably need to make it as an ordinance.
I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Scott?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion to declare an emergency?
I will.
I'll second that.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Motion to adopt this present as one?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Scott?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce? Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then the personnel and procedures, manual or, uh, ordinance. Passing for council rules and bylaws. That'll be ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one. An ordinance establishing rules of council of the village of Betsville, Ohio. Whereas the council of the village of Betsville is authorized by statute to set rules of council. Whereas the council is desirous of maintaining sev- sovereignty and fairness for the council of the village. And now therefore be it ordained by the council of the village of Betsville, city county of Ohio, as follows. The attached rules of council shall be adopted, all previous rules of council are superseded by the attached rules. Passed and is due as syndication by the mayor and the clerk of the village of Betsville, Ohio, this will be the first reading.
Maybe I'm missing something, where are the attached rules?
Well, that's, these are the rules.
Yeah, those are the rules we.
You, you have them, it's the ones we brought up.
Yep.
Everybody had.
Everybody was giving a copy.
Well, sure.
So there's been no changes to what?
No.
There is, it's a living document, though, it can be changed by, um, by council approval.
Okay. Anybody got any old business to bring up?
I'll print new copies of that and bring some back to you, so you can find out and give Angela copies so she can attach it.
Okay. Okay.
We detach everything, so everything's together, so.
Sure.
There won't be no changes on it.
If not under new business, will approve the magistrate report?
Oh, it's at home, yeah.
Oh, you need a motion for this?
Uh, yeah, approve the magistrate court, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And next, I passed around the contract for the Jackson County Fire Department, let's set that down.
Part.
Oh, there's two copies.
Yeah.
So when they need to make a motion or not to pass the new fire contract?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to pass the contract for the.
Close.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
I see why you keep quiet, I'm not pretty sure.
Okay. Did you need to know how much it was or anything, Brittany?
If you're gonna declare that, I will point that.
Well, we get twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, we make two, two semi-annual payments of thirteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. We paid in June and December. And I will need to bring up the point and put it in the council.
I wanna make it, please, is the council, I wanna make a, uh, rec, um.
Motion?
A motion to nominate Scott Harrison as president of council for two thousand fifteen.
There he is.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, first and a second.
Rob?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Do you mind saying Scott too?
I don't think I can vote on myself.
Yeah.
And while we're in a motion mood here. We have to make a motion to reappoint, uh, Judge McDermott as the, uh, judge for the magistrate court.
That's true.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
There you go.
The way it's been going here lately, it was not worth it. That was the worst.
Well, we have Judge Judy.
Oh, yeah?
Dominating Judge Judy.
Thomas. She's a little caustic, yeah.
Thomas McDermott, honey.
Joyce?
Tom.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And I just wanna throw out, the Supreme Court has been notified, we're all registered for this year, so our court is legal for this year, yeah.
Thank you.
It's, it's, usually it would take just three or four tickets a month to keep it going, right?
Well, we had two, we had two in December and that paid for the judge review.
We had two meetings in December.
And we had two meetings in December, and we only had two tickets. The whole year we had twenty-six tickets written. And a hun- almost seventy or eighty citation, warning citations given.
Okay, and for your information too, the furnace is installed in the police department.
That's much appreciated.
I thought you would like it this time of year.
Yeah.
Space heater got old, huh?
It wasn't even.
Not expensive.
Yeah. So Angela's got heat up scares too, as you're saying?
Yeah.
Nice up there, Angela?
Yeah, John and I went up a week or so ago, you couldn't believe how long it was.
Really?
It's a wood burner, plus pallets.
Yeah.
Now I got a brand new one in my garage, it's never been used, wood burner. One of the grandkids knocked the glass out with a softball.
Pretty good pitcher, he was aiming for that too.
No, he wasn't, he was a lousy pitcher.
Well, at least he didn't get hurt.
Um, anybody got anything else under new business to bring up?
I got a thing or two.
Okay.
Um, I saw that this was passed out today and it kinda made me think of, uh, I guess what they call the certified public record training, are any of us planning on going to that? Well, usually, usually Angela goes.
Um, I had talked to Gary, the council member ten, I go back and train the council.
Right.
Julie said to keep track, I'm checking on the internet, there's nothing up yet.
I know, you were at the one I was at. Yeah.
Yeah, I was there too.
It was good information, I thought, too.
Yeah, nothing's up yet on it.
Yeah, you can go for council, but there's some paperwork, I think, that, um.
Like the trainer meeting or whatever.
That has to be filled out, there's some stipulations, you have to jump a few hurdles to, like, you have to have authorization and writing.
Right, yeah, there's nothing up yet, when it's gonna be.
Okay.
To send, she's like, Julie said she thinks there's one coming up in the spring.
Okay. Um, the other quick thing I wanted to ask about, when's the last time, if ever, that council, either when we've been on council, or if anybody remembers, that we've explored the pros and cons of a village charter versus a non-chartered administration? I've just, I think from what I've learned so far, I've got more to learn, that.
It's very expensive.
Well, I guess I haven't run into that hurdle yet, I haven't seen that anywhere. But, um.
Yeah, of course.
Any idea how much a lot is? I haven't heard any dollar amounts yet, in my.
For example, how much does the Ohio basic code books we get twice a year, one, two volumes, how much does each volume cost? Three to five hundred dollars a piece, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna have a whole different set of rules and things like that, just, just think of the publication cost alone.
So we would be responsible for that, right?
And you can vote on the charter and everything else, but most people do it away from that, except cities have them.
Right.
But the villages don't, the villages normally out right under, um, the system we're operating under right now.
I know the city of Tiffin is real big on it, but maybe.
Well, they're going on it every ten years, and, but that's a city, that's.
Yeah.
It comes down to, do you have the resources to, to maintain all that stuff?
Versus running just with D O R C.
So do, are you thinking that it's the money aspect that's the biggest hurdle and the biggest?
Well, and not time-consuming too, for small village, you can have to have somebody, and it's, it's not just for the initial, you gotta keep going with it too. So that's a big commitment for a small community.
I'm not asking you to listen, but do you know of any advantages that a, uh, village would see?
For a charter?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm all for a city having a charter, cause I think they have the resources. I'm, I'm not seeing the board, I mean, we get protections running with the D O R C, and all that's involved.
Yeah, what advantages do the cities see, since if they have the?
They have more independence.
Right, even more flexibility and.
But we're just too small, I think, is my, my personal thought, y'all can do what you want.
Right.
You're, I mean, also you got people backing a lot of people, not just like facility, but help, well.
Not just ordinance and stuff, but it's other things.
I'm sorry, I didn't wanna put it that way, but.
But you did.
I did, sorry.
And we pay this guy.
I know, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, it's, you know, push button, it's been done before, just keep going, that's why, just make sure you get the right village.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my big problem. Yeah, right there.
No, I'm not, I, I concur, I mean, you know, from what I've read, you know, it's like, I'm not an expert on this stuff, but from what I was reading, when I was looking for the sunshine, I'm looking at different, our obligations and like that, and I would just.
You look into it, but I, I'd be looking at the costs.
Yeah.
I guess there are advantages.
I would think maybe there's templates out there of a common village setup. I would think, I mean, I'll have to look, but there's a template you could start with, so you wouldn't have to write it from scratch, but.
No, but I think what he's getting at is the, the maintaining of the documents and all that stuff, I mean, we, that still has to take, we're gonna have somebody doing that, it costs you money to do that.
When I, I go to how municipal meetings, I, I do it, could, as, they, in my capacity as an attorney, I have some, I have some balance, I sell some, I have books there, for charters, they're expensive, they're more than what I have here.
Are you familiar in, this Tiffin, for example, is there one person or one department that does the work Scott mentions that has to keep up with it, or, I mean, is it that much of a deal that there's a person or a department that, that's their job to, to do?
No, it's not their job, I mean, you, I mean, but you, you get confirmation of, um, administrator and the lawyer and the powers that be, maybe. And you would do it every ten years, which is, you have people go on. Which, and, and even there, the votes I've seen, for example, well, let's keep employees within the community, sometimes they're violating, you know, the Ohio Supreme Court rules on that stuff, and I say, why are you voting for something unconstitutional, perhaps?
Yeah.
And, and yet it goes through, I, I don't know how wise it all is in this, um, for a village, but, I mean, if people were a larger village, they could do that, and even then, I wonder why are they spending money on that? Versus something they're getting, like, part.
True.
But, if, if, I, I, just looking at the books that they sell, I mean, if I were going down and I was wanted by a law, it, it would be with all the forms and templates and everything else, and then, it's a, there, it's a big book, I think, that I'm down there, American publishing, I'm gonna make something like that. I've never bothered with it, cause I don't deal with them.
Yeah, all the villages you were familiar with are non-chartered?
Mm.
Okay, the only other thing I was wondering was, um, is there anything we need to address tonight? It says, the mayor shall make an annual report each January, is that something additional that we need to do or Gary needs to do? I don't know, if we've done that in the past, or?
We haven't done it in the past, but I mean, we can get things around and make ones, but, um, in February, it ain't gonna be January. You know, what you guys want to expect me?
State of the community, doesn't understand.
I, I don't know, it just says, um, the mayor shall make an annual report each January, this is out of the, um, village, something handbook, village, we talked about before.
Village officer handbook?
Yeah, 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 it just says, the mayor shall make an annual report each January, and it says O R C seven thirty-three dot three-two and four or five other ones.
I've seen it done.
And I was wondering if we need to cover this base, it says, public hearings on a tax budget shall be given, and it specifies how much in advance needs to be done, and two copies of the tax, tax budget shall be filed. Um, and it says, public hearing has to be offered, is that something that somebody?
That's what we do, that's what we did before, beginning of the year, remember, that's what we was going through, saying this was, the money was appropriated out of Julie, that's what that is, how we, we.
We just did it.
Yeah, that's what we just did, I mean, that's what we did, that's what we've been doing on the three readings and all that stuff, that's what we did in the last three meetings.
Right, right, but did we, you have to put anything in the paper or anything, it says, public hearings.
Well, that's what we're doing, this, this is a public hearing.
The appropriations were in the newspapers.
It's newspapers, I mean, so, I mean, that stuff's.
Yeah, well, that was my question, did we cover that base?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what it is, so, I mean, that's what, that's what this whole thing was, setting our, our, you know, our funding or what our anticipated revenue was gonna be, and that's what, all that's what we got from Julie, and that's how we went back and forth with her, before she finalized and said, then, yeah, this, we accept this now.
Okay, yeah, that's all I was wondering, is you.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Angela.
We covered the public hearing part of it.
Right. Yeah, so every time we have a meeting here, it's public, I mean, it's a public hearing, so, you know, and we, and it's, it's in the paper, I mean, it's.
Yeah, every month we have one, sometimes twice.
All right.
And just for your information, standing that sign on the door there, but, no firearms and stuff, this is a government building, you are not allowed to carry in a government building.
I guess I misunderstood, I thought that was only federal buildings.
No, government buildings. So, uh, so what you posted on there is, it's not something that were against guns, it's just a.
Yeah, we, you shouldn't bring the firearm.
You cannot bring it, do you have one?
No, no.
Okay, well, I mean, I did wanna make sure.
I mean, the officers can bring it.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
But, I mean.
I know post offices you can't, but I, my understanding was it was federal buildings.
No.
The, we missed town.
Yeah, and that's why that's posted, it's not that were against guns, so, the post that you put on there that were against guns, were, were not, it's the law.
I didn't actually say that we were against it, I just asked about it, but, okay, thanks. Oh, I, I tried to stop up this morning to get some information, were we not open this morning?
Today's Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah. Yeah, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. Guess I, maybe she threw me off, maybe, Tuesday, that wouldn't make a difference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this where we say, make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do I need anything writing to, uh, if this flop is vacated?
It's already built on here.
Okay, so I don't.
You can get a copy of the.
I did it, I squatted it.
And I mean, if you, if you want a copy of our minutes, it's in there that we put.
For some reason you get a bill again before, call me up.
Most likely, being the paper.
I'm sure you will, too.
It should, it shouldn't print it out.
You know, probably being a paper through, we did it.
It shouldn't, the system shouldn't print it out, so. Oh, we don't pick up through the winter.
Not through the winter.
I know that.
But, they go on Monroe Street, not human?
For what?
For picking up the stick.
Don't bother me.
Gary, you're talking about pickdust.
Yeah, put it on Monroe side, cause it's easier than out there, and where they have your.
It don't take much.
You wouldn't be the first. Uh, you know, a few more rains, I'll be over there anyhow. What, what, do you think our benefit would be to be a charter?
I don't know yet, I'm still doing a lot of reading on it, but from talking with Mayor Monson, Tiffin, who I've known for many years, and other people, they see no reason not to be chartered. He says there's so much more flexibility, he went into detail, but I couldn't repeat it, because I, I don't remember all the details he said. But I've heard a lot of positive, and I haven't really heard any negative to, tonight about the cost of it, so I still got a lot of.
We have a larger budget and a lot more personnel than what we have here, regardless of whether they have one designated person to do things or not.
I don't know, I still have a lot of homework to do on it, I'm just curious, you know.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's just feedback from different people I've talked with.
I mean, if you're looking from a different, different perspective, I mean, they, they have resources there, because they do have the law, the lawyers, the staff, everybody.